Welcome. I hope you all enjoyed the fifth Tuesday off. I know I did, but it's good to be back. Look forward to a good meeting. We're gonna... Oh, please, Mr. Moss is being a... working with the Boy Scouts today and will not be in attendance at this meeting. And so we wish him doing well with the kids and thank you for letting him help those young people. We're gonna start off with the city manager's briefings. And I also am asked to make note that Mr. Moss did send a note pertaining to what's being, you know, presented today. So I'm making that note for you. But we'll go ahead and get... start with the integrated housing strategy. Mr. Spoor, please.
Okay, just very briefly, Mayor, thank you. The council identified at your retreat in February that we needed a real strategy to deal with housing issues in the community. And Andy and his folks have undertaken a process to get us through that point. This is not a presentation on the strategy, but it's on the process that we're proposing to use to get to a housing strategy. So with that, Andrew Friedman, our esteemed Director of Housing and Neighborhood Preservation, is here to make the presentation.
Andy, we're glad to have you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thanks, Jim. Okay. So we wanted to frame the housing strategy. We wanted to frame the housing strategy in the context of the overall goals for the community that both council has said and council has endorsed, the Vision 2040 view for the future of the city. In Vision 2040 says that we should have exciting, diverse, and interconnected neighborhoods, and that those neighborhoods should provide a variety of affordable housing alternatives that meet the needs of all people who wish to live in Virginia Beach. So that's one set of contexts. In addition, as the city manager said, he set a priority of needing a policy to deal with our aging housing stock. And I think we talked to you a couple of weeks ago about those... that age as part of the presentation I did. And our own comprehensive plan says that we'll be a city with vibrant, well-maintained neighborhoods where everyone has the opportunity to obtain desirable, safe, and affordable housing. I think you all know how important owner-occupied housing is in our city. It's about 60% of our housing stock. Most of us, it's our biggest asset and our potential wealth. And when the city does work that helps maintain property values, we believe everyone wins. In addition, 40% of our households rent, or nearly 40%, and that rent is a real economic driver in the city and a very important source of shelter for those households. In addition, you know, housing, residential property is 83% of our real estate tax base. That's the chart that really says it all, that our resident... real estate tax base is 80... 83%, or $43 billion worth of residential real estate in the city, a significant source of our city's revenue. We used to be the fastest-growing city in the country, but we're not anymore. We're growing at about 1,700 housing units per year, about 1%. And we have... we know that you have adopted different development plans. The strategic growth areas intended to focus our development in those areas and provide for higher-density housing. In addition, we have, as I talked about in my last presentation, our housing is mostly there, that with the housing we're gonna have in 2040 is already mostly here on the ground. It's gonna get older, and we need a plan to make sure that our goals for the neighborhoods and the housing are achieved. So that's what we wanted to do, is lay out the process to getting to some strategies and plans that would lead us in that direction. As the city manager said, this is not a strategy. This is our... trying to present to you our plan to get to that and get your input here at the very, very beginning. Some of the things we have to think about is what are the best ways to ensure the preservation and enhancement of our diverse housing stock? How to preserve the style and character of our neighborhoods while ensuring that there's continued investment and revitalization? I know all of us have seen places where people have reinvested but done a very poor job of maintaining the style and character of the neighborhood. And we want to match our future housing types and costs to the people who are gonna live here. We want to make sure we have housing that's affordable to the range of people who are gonna live here. So our proposal is to develop an integrated and long-term strategy to address housing affordability, housing preservation combined. And we want to do that based on the best available information and the best practices known nationally. So to do that, we propose to review current plans, engage some experts to study issues and the best practices, and recommend what we should do, conduct a review of all of the current things we do in this area, housing programs, obviously have significant community dialogue throughout the community and all the key stakeholders. And at that point, after we've done all that work, come back to City Council with some recommendations. So we did have the 2008 Housing and Neighborhood Preservation Plan, which was presented to you by the Planning Commission, and it included some recommendations to address these very issues. The pattern book, which provided guidelines for people who wanted to rehabilitate their housing and do it in alignment with neighborhood's style. We also had in there a proposal for a tax abatement program, but that one came out right as the recession hit, and we decided that it wasn't a good time to consider reducing tax revenues. So we're gonna review that report and consider all the ideas, because they came out of significant community involvement back in 2007 and '08. We also have the Housing and Neighborhood Present... the Housing and Neighborhood Chapter of the Comp Plan, which has several action items regarding these issues. We'll review those as well. And hopefully, if we can do this with good timing, the recommendation of this housing strategy will become part of the Housing Chapter of the Comprehensive Plan, because that, as you know, is under development right now. We do think it's important to engage an expert to give the city the best possible advice on these issues. In 2004, as Rosemary knows, we engaged Virginia Tech. We think they did a great study, and it was relied upon by everybody to discuss the issues as a foundation for developing recommendations. We want to look at the needs of all the different subgroups in our community, including seniors and the disabled, look at housing conditions, and, as I said, best practices for achieving goals for affordability and preservation combined. We obviously also have things we're doing today. We're city programs that help to preserve our communities, and we think that they've been successful to date, but everything needs a review and an update. So we want to look at how they're working and compare them to the needs in the future. Some of those programs, we have programs that help with housing affordability, the Housing Choice voucher program. We provide development financing for nonprofits, and we have homeless assistance programs. We also have preservation programs, including our overall code enforcement program. A part of that is the rental inspection program. And we have owner-occupied rehabilitation programs that help our existing homeowners preserve their houses. So all of those are things we're doing today. As part of this strategy development, we review these and say, are they the way they need to be to address the city's future needs? Obviously, we would, during and upon completion of the studies, conduct community conversations with key community groups, industry groups such as TBA, the Realtors, and so forth, and make sure that, to the greatest extent possible, our recommendations are either consensus recommendations or either incorporate the input of all key stakeholders. And then, based on having done all of those things, we would go to the city manager with our recommendations, and then, based on his review, come to you with a long-term housing strategy. So we are about to begin the contract for the study that we talked about. We haven't advertised it yet. We're right at the beginning of the process. We hope to receive the results of this study. I would say winter is a more realistic timeframe, by the time we award to a vendor, and they have several months to do it. And then, spring of next year is when we would have some recommendations. It's not the perfect time, because it's kind of off-budget, but we can... we can work with that. I just conclude with this picture of a house. This is a townhome in Princess Anne Plaza. The picture was taken about 20 years ago. I would say that everyone would agree this is a nice home, well-maintained, and that the owner has pride in their home. This was a house that we helped rehabilitate. And the point of the picture is modest housing can be a great neighbor, contribute to the neighborhood, and modest... the owner obviously takes pride in their housing. So wanted this to be a picture where we remember that all of our neighborhoods can be vibrant and well-maintained regardless of the cost of the housing. And I'd be happy to answer your questions.
Andy, thank you very much. Rosemary?
Andy, I'm very happy that you've gotten this started, and I wanted to comment on the pattern book, because it's really a fantastic tool.
Great.
And Owen and I, they worked very, very hard on it. I think the problem is it's not well-known.
It's not what?
It's not well-known.
Yes, ma'am.
Not many people even know about it. And we really need to do a better job in promoting it. And when this came up at our retreat, most of the members of the council didn't even know about it. So it's a great tool. I don't know if there's some way some of this stuff could be put at the strategic growth area offices, too.
Sure.
You know, that we could be... this whole housing thing could be working with strategic growth area as well. But if we can get the pattern book out there so more people know about it and can use it, I think that would be a nice little jumpstart. And the work's already done.
Right. Great, thank you. We'll definitely get that more than well-known.
Please, we appreciate it.
Help me to understand, Andy, if you will, the hiring of a consultant or the RFP process.
Yes, ma'am.
What is it that the consultant or that process is going to answer for us or look into that we wouldn't be qualified to do as professionals on the staff already? What... what makes it needed?
All right. So we don't have a housing specialist, the person... we're actually finding the money to do this by a vacancy that just occurred this year, who would otherwise have been in charge of doing that study. So we're kind of trading one for the other. We have a vacancy. I think we can get a higher level of expertise. And the other thing that it really gives us, I think, is the defensibility and the recognition that if... that the study is really the best it can be, and we can make solid recommendations based on it. That's a choice we can certainly make as a city if we want to go that route. We certainly do have a lot of housing data, but the ability to forecast the trends and do the analysis that no... takes all factors into consideration, I'm not sure we have that.
Amelia?
Okay. I also backed off on what Shannon said about that, but she's brought it up. I wanted to ask, when you mentioned about the community conversation...
Yes, ma'am.
...in that form, you also mentioned the... do you have a committee that works with this? I know Rosemary may be on part of this committee, but do you all include somebody from these communities to be on one of these committees, so that where you hear, you know, some of their concerns and add to it?
I think that's...
Also mention about where you engage Virginia Tech?
Yes, ma'am.
You plan to use the same group again?
Not necessarily. We plan to have an open competition for... and choose the best... best combination of price and expertise if we can.
Okay, because you seem very pleased.
We were. We were very pleased.
And the last thing I wrote down about the voucher program, because a lot of people don't seem to understand how that works, that they only come through BBCDC. Where do they go, some of the community? Because just yesterday, I saw a young man and his girl partner, the best alphabet. I should use the word partner. But anyway, they were looking to rent something, and where can we go? And I mentioned five BBCDCs. We've never heard of BBCDC. So, you know, just getting those words out to some of the community. And the last thing is, I like the way, when I was on the board there, that the homes are not concentrated in one spot.
Right.
So it may be in a very wealthy neighborhood, or what? And people to understand that we all may come down on our luck, but, you know, putting that out more for the community in the conversation to understand, you know, we're just our brothers' keepers, and we're trying to keep people off the street and trying to make them responsible homeowners or renters. Thank you for a great report.
Any other questions or comments? Andy, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
My goodness, the city manager's gonna make a presentation.
Just a short one, Your Honor.
Oh, I know better than that.
Well, thanks very much. We've got a couple of items coming up on the agenda later today, and there's a handout coming around in terms of the few slides I'm gonna show you... share with you today. Warren's gonna talk a little bit about the biomedical initiative and about the Veterans' Care Center. And these are two really fantastic opportunities to grow our economy and to diversify our economy. And there's a report that came out recently that I think puts a lot of this in context. So what I wanted to try to do today was set that up in terms of why are we talking about these two development initiatives? And we're gonna be talking in closed session about some other opportunities that we're working on with the staff. And like, I think it's important that we all share where we are on those in terms of what the potentials might be in terms of helping the economic vitality of our area. And I got the idea for this in terms of a presentation that was made... whoops. There we go. At the Planning District Commission, this is an article that was in the Virginian Pilot on the 13th of June. Talks about the local economy possibly shrank last year. And if you recall, some of the projections that we had done when we were putting the budget together and having all those discussions, the general consensus of all the economists was that we were gonna see a percent and a half to maybe 2% growth in GRP, gross regional product, for the year. And now then, some new data's out, and the possibility that in Hampton Roads, our economy actually contracted in the last year as opposed to grew. And that was... that was in the paper fairly recently, back in June. The benchmarking study was presented to the Planning District Commission, and I just pulled a few slides from that to set this context. This report takes a look at 35 metropolitan areas in the United States that have a population of 1 million to 3 million. So Hampton Roads is right in the middle of that. We're 1.7 million, right in the middle of those 35 regions. And I guess this... and this is the 10th year that they've done this study, takes a look at census data and Labor Department statistics, and presents a series of 154 indicators. I'm not gonna go over 154 indicators today, you'll be happy to know. But just take a look at a few of those to see how we compare. Here's the three-year employment growth of Hampton Roads, and it compares to the 35 metropolitan areas around the country that are in that 1 million to 3 million range. And you see Hampton Roads over on the far right of the slide, we are dead last out of those 35 regions around the United States with a three-year employment growth of about 0.47%. So we're down there with Buffalo, New York, Rochester, New York, St. Louis, Missouri, Hartford, Connecticut. We're about half of how they're growing, and they're in their 33, 34 position. If you look at some of our, what we consider competitive set, if you look at the report... get our high-tech pointer here. You know, Charlotte and Raleigh are up here at a 3% rate, basically. Jacksonville, Baltimore, Richmond, right in here. Their rate of growth over the last three years has been three times that of Hampton Roads. Raleigh and Charlotte, about six times our growth rate. Those are places that we say we compete with. Each of the 17 communities in the region has a profile page, and you can say, well, those were Hampton Roads figures. Virginia Beach is doing much better than the rest of Hampton Roads, which is true. We have a lower employment rate. But even in Virginia Beach, the percent of employment growth over a five-year period, 2008 through 2013, this is in the Great Recession, admittedly, was a minus 2.6%. So our total number of jobs is lower today than it was five years ago. We look at a change in our gross regional product. This goes back to 2001. In the period before the recession, 2001 through 2007, we had an average gross regional product growth in Hampton Roads of about 3.3%. Since the Great Recession, the last five years, 13 being the latest data point that they have, we're growing at about 0.4% per year, which is about 1/8. The report actually says 1/10th. I don't know how they get that, but 4/10ths of a percent per year versus 3.3% there. So we're growing about 1/8 of the rate that we were for the five years prior to the recession. So what's causing that loss in jobs? And everybody's... the immediate knee-jerk reaction is, well, it's sequestration, it's DoD, it's defense jobs, it's military jobs. It's more than that. This looks at retail employment changes. Again, here's the 35 metropolitan areas around the country. We're at a minus 8.3% over that timeframe. And again, comparing with Birmingham, Alabama, Memphis, Tennessee, Cleveland, Providence, not exactly the set you'd want to be competing with as opposed to some of the others. Raleigh, for example, here, Charlotte, so on and so forth. So lots of retail jobs lost as well. The text that's below the slides in your handout, that's the actual text that was in the Planning District Report, so you can see what they said about those. How about construction employment? What's happened in terms of construction employment at Hampton Roads? And you can see, you know, no surprise to anybody, the peak was in 2005, 2006. But back, take where we are in '14, you go back all the way to 1990, we have fewer construction jobs in Hampton Roads today than we had 25 years ago. So we've lost in terms of construction jobs. So I think jobs really do matter. I don't have a slide to show other areas of the economy, but other sectors that are contracting are local government was down quite a bit in terms of local government job growth. So it's not just defense jobs. It's very poor regional performance in terms of our economy as compared with the 35 similarly-sized metropolitan areas in the country, and not just by a little bit, but by a lot. So we've got our work cut out for us. So the conclusion is pretty obvious, that since the Great Recession, the Hampton Roads' economy has significantly underperformed regions of similar size around the country. And to overcome this condition, all reasonable efforts should be aggressively pursued to diversify and grow the Hampton Roads' economy in order to create additional jobs and enhance prosperity for everybody. I think... I think with that said, and with that in our minds, I think we can really take a look at some initiatives that we've developed to try and address those trends. And rather than just say, well, gee, it's really too bad, we're not... we're not competing. What can we do about it? I think that's the... that's the key. And I think just another data point would be the paper last Thursday. I got... I got home last night from my trip and read the last week's worth of the Virginian Pilot, and that's always an exciting experience to read them all at once, but last Thursday...
Especially this last week.
You know, here's the... here's the business section from last Thursday. Jobless rate tops... jobless rate tops national average first time in a decade. So Hampton Roads now, which we have traditionally had a lower unemployment rate than the country, we are now at a higher rate of unemployment than the United States. That's the first time that's happened in like the last 15 years. So I think this is important stuff. I wanted to try and set the table for you in terms of, as we talk about the biomedical initiative, as we talk about the Veterans Center, and as we talk about a half a dozen or so projects in closed session to bring you up to speed, is keep in mind that this is really important stuff, and these jobs really, really do matter. So with that, unless there's any questions on the data, the full report's available online, or I can get you a hard copy if you'd like it. I don't think it's particularly news, but I think it was surprising to me that out of those 35 regions, that we are not just last, we're dead last by a factor of two or three times the growth rate of those other regions.
Do you have some quick... Bobby?
Yeah, Jim, thank you for that sobering report. Instead of talking about it in council comments, you know, there is an initiative that the staff and our Process Improvement Group is working on, you know, with the development of the small business. And we've been meeting with, you know, Doug Smith and everything, and I think we've been making some forward progress, you know, in terms of improving, you know, DSC, permitted inspection, and the process of people starting and opening a business. And as we mentioned, 75% of the businesses have 30 employees or less. And once again, we're trying to create an environment where the most business welcoming in terms of ease of starting a business and starting to build up what's going on. And our hope is that Virginia Beach is gonna be the leader in this, but that is also gonna be a plan that all of Hampton Roads will be able to use. Maybe we can even do some cooperative initiatives between us and, you know, for maybe some standardization with buildings and permits and everything to make things a little bit easier, just be more user-friendly for establishing. And, you know, Mr. Spoor, thank you, and Doug, and, you know, the staff are really pitching in and helping us.
Well, I think that's a great example of something that we can do in a positive vein. I mean, these... these numbers are what they are. They're the facts. So I think the question is, how are we gonna respond to that reality? And I think the example that Councilmember Dyer just gave is a good example of a positive thing that we can do. The next president... the next two presentations are really Warren Harris, our Director of Economic Development, talking about two...
This is how we're gonna respond to.
...two really great opportunities, and some that we're making some great progress on. The first is the biomedical initiative, and we're very pleased to have Tom Franz with us today, who has really put in the midnight hours on helping us get through this.
Okay, Tom, thanks for being here.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, I thought I would go out and play in traffic, but I thought I'd best come in and make this presentation with you all today. Thank you all for allowing us to come forward and give you an update on the bio initiative that you all have so graciously supported in this year's operating budget. We are at a very critical point in terms of its direction, and today, what we thought we would do is to allow Tom, as one of the co-chairs, to come forward and share with you some of the perspectives that he has uncovered and in his work as co-chair. Ronnie Thomas with Life Net Health is the other co-chair. He's out of town. But you'll find, I think you'll find it enlightening in some of the things that, through our work, has really stimulated this target industry sector, not only here within the Hampton Roads region, or the mega-region, or for that matter, for the Commonwealth of Virginia. I want to give you a little bit about what we're going to focus in on this next fiscal year in terms of our strategy. We've had, since we've announced this initiative, we've had some good fortune of being on the road and testing some of the outcomes of our market study and some of the bold steps that we're making. David will come forward and talk to you a little bit about what we're referring to as some market realities. He'll also share with you some work that our Virginia Bio is having in a reception that they're hosting that we'd like, if your calendars permit, for you to join us. And then, of course, we'll wrap up with any questions and answers. So with that, I'd like to go ahead and ask Tom to come forward and for him to lead off the presentation.
Tom, we appreciate you coming down.
Thank you, Warren. Thank you, Mayor. Ladies and gentlemen, it's great to be here. You all really stimulated a lot of activity on the diversification of the economy. I have been astounded by the response we've seen, and it's going far beyond Virginia Beach in this regional effort. It's... the state is very engaged. Just today, they announced that Senate Appropriations was, on a bipartisan basis, recommending $2 billion additional in NIH funding to stimulate bio in the country. And totally bipartisan, including Tea Party support. Everybody is... Everybody is, is realizing that not only do we have to work on health solutions for the health problems that are out there, but we have to strengthen our economy on a national basis. So what you started a little more than a year ago is, is now resonating in the halls of Congress and throughout the country. The task force, as you know, finished and made its recommendation to you at, at a meeting several times, several meetings ago. Since then, we have continued to talk, to work with Warren and Doug and their team. And the collaboration among the members of the task force has been palpable. I have seen time and again examples of ODU, William &amp; Mary, TCC, Centerra, Riverside, LifeNet, working together like we've never seen them work together before to pool research and pool opportunities and create joint ventures and, and get moving. And the, the report does call for a region-wide approach from Richmond to the oceanfront, and that's the way it's, it's coming. But we need that in order to get the players from that greater region working together in things that we're good at. And everyone is calling for multiple hubs, this being clearly one of them. The city has a complete advantage because you have land, you have a strong financial position, and you are adding incentives as Warren will go through today and as you approved recently. So you're, you're going to get more looks than other jurisdictions without a doubt. In these meetings, I've had the opportunity to observe firsthand the research that's coming out of LifeNet individually and in collaboration with the others. It impresses everybody who sees it. I'm sure you all have seen it, but you have a considerable bio resource right down the street, and, and we should all be glad they're here and that they're growing at the rate they're growing. Virginia Bio has been so impressed with everything coming out of here that they're having their quarterly meeting at LifeNet July 24th. You all will get an invitation to it. We're going to call the task force together at 3 o'clock that day, give them an update. You're welcome to come to that. And then they, Virginia Bio will have their board meeting at 4:00. Then there'll be a cocktail hour at 5:00. I believe all the legislators are invited. And it promises to be a, a good day with a little bit of celebration and, and a little more positive feeling than we had a few minutes ago. But the, the other thing that surprised me and the mayor was when we met with the governor and we presented the, our plan to the governor, and we got about five minutes into it, and he said, stop. He said, you're not thinking big enough. We said, excuse me? And he said that last year, he was at the National Bio Conference with other governors, and he was disappointed to see that Virginia is in the bottom half of the states in bio because they haven't invested and made the strategic decisions that other states have done in the past. And we sit at our closest point, 12 miles away from NIH, and we're barely in the top 25 in NIH funding. So he, he came home inspired. He, he got his four top secretaries, finance, commerce, ag, and health, and human services working on this. They have been developing a statewide plan to add considerable funding for bio. Because of my role as head of a task force, I was asked to join them and literally just two weeks ago, sat in a meeting next to the Secretary of Finance and two places away from the Secretary of Commerce. They were there the whole time, and people were, had rolled up their sleeves. And we studied what other states have been, have done, what investment they've made, how they've gone about managing that investment and setting goals and accountability in the results, which have been incredible, and the number of high-paid jobs that have been created. North Carolina is an example. They, they have 10 to 1 over us in high-paying bio jobs, and it started with their bio initiative about 20 years ago. We have talked at length to the former head of North Carolina Bio, Norris Tolson, and he has laid out the North Carolina plan to us, which is to split up the state and have different regions focus on different areas of bio. We've already, in essence, done that for Richmond to the oceanfront and, and set a claim for diabetes, heart, neurotraumatic brain injuries, wounded warriors, which are all wrapped up together. And we are seeing opportunities develop there, but, but it, it takes investment. Dr. Jennifer Lee, who's the Deputy Secretary of Health and who is a breath of fresh air, is, is leading the charge at the state. My, my volunteerism has, has continued, and it seems like I talk to her about every other day, and she's actually asked me to do the first cut of the state plan from our city regional plan. So I thought that was a, a good salute to the, the work you all have done and, and your vision, because other people are noticing that vision, and that vision now is, is being carried to the state. But it's clear that the stakes are high, but the rewards are great if we, if we do it right. We can diversify the economy, we can create jobs, we can turn around the numbers that we saw here a while ago. But, but it takes, it takes commitment, it takes plan, it takes discipline, it takes goal settings, and it takes holding people accountable for not performing and rewarding those who do perform. We've got to recruit more star researchers and eminent scholars who are good at research and who get the idea of connecting their research with business, businesses. We've got to create more Centers of Excellence in, in treatment. I believe you have at least one opportunity that's bubbled up that you'll hear about later, about a Center of Excellence for Treatment with Attendant Translational Research. We've got to look at the loan programs and the investment funds that the other states have established, take a page out of some of their books, use their best practices. The states that have done the best are the states that have a businesslike approach to it, as opposed to us, the states that sort of put money in and take a shotgun approach and hope it works. That won't work. It's got to be, it's got to be disciplined, it's got to be focused, it's got to be led by a quarterback that understands how to make things happen. And, and it's got to have a team of export, experts working on it, both from the standpoint of setting the vision and carrying it out, but also from vetting opportunities, because you can make mistakes in any investments, and particularly when you're dealing, dealing with science. So you're going to have to have some expert scientists, you're going to have to have some expert private equity people that are vetting these opportunities and make sure that they, that they're real. I want to read you one thing out of the article today that I gave each a copy of about the $2 billion proposal coming out of Senate Appropriations. And that is that this funding transcends where you sit on the political spectrum. We can't solve mandatory health spending problems without finding cures for Alzheimer's, heart disease, cancer, and diabetes. Everybody is for that. So the mayor's original charge to Ronnie and I, and your efforts over these last 18 months, clearly you're ahead of a lot, a lot of people in the country and, and ahead of some states, but it comes time now to start rolling up sleeves and executing, because if we do that well, we can turn around what we just saw. Questions?
Well, first of all, Tom, I want to say on behalf of the entire council, thanks for everything you've done. This council does, you know, and I'm so glad Jim made the presentation before you got up and spoke. This is not new news to us. This is something that we've seen, and this city's fared very well during the last five or six years and has a lot to be proud of. But I think as a city and a region, especially this city, needs to show leadership in this region doing things that you're talking about today. And we can sit back and think this is just little old Virginia Beach doing it. This is a issue, the Commonwealth is way, way behind. The governor has acknowledged that. I think in our meeting, he said he was going to try to come up with $200 million in the next budget. Now, thank you if he comes up with that $200 million because of the way we're positioned. We're going to get a piece of that. Now, is it going to be 20%, 10% or 50%? I don't know. But I know the better prepared we are, the better opportunity we are to get some of that money. Also, we were very blessed to have Tom and Ronnie and, and the staff at Economic Development and the other members of this committee. He's being very, he's holding himself back. These guys have basically written what the state's doing. And to me, that's the greatest compliment there can be. Dr. Lee's in touch with him every day because she's getting more information to put together the, the plan. And that's because we've got good leaders, and I mean, Tom could be billing $1,000 an hour right now, and he's with us. And we're blessed to have him right now. And that entire team are doing a great job. And I want to sit back and again, thank him for what he's done. This will turn those numbers around, and it will turn it around in a quick manner. But we can't let up a half a second. When Warren gets up here and speaks on these upcoming projects, it's not a matter of if, we got to make them happen. And I think we can. But Tom, we thank you, and just keep hanging in there with us. We appreciate all this volunteer time.
It's been a pleasure. The only thing that I was a little thrown back by was when the governor told Will and I that we were thinking small, but we're trying to remedy that.
Thank you.
All right, Warren, beat that one.
No, I can't, but I can certainly support it and supplement some of the words that you've brought forward and bring forward specific tasks and actions that we're going to take on this upcoming fiscal year. As I mentioned, you know, we are appreciative of council's bold move in terms of funding this initiative, and we wanted to take this time to sort of outline what we're going to do this, during this first phase of activities over the next fiscal year. And what Tom mentioned is so true. I mean, we're not doing this as an exercise of, of research or making us all feel good. I mean, this is about translational research. In other words, we want industry and business to be, be an outcome of these efforts. And so it's great that we would and can see some research done, but at the end of the day, the ultimate goal, the ultimate outcome is for us to benefit from industry and businesses being established in this corridor as a result of this, this initiative. So the first area in our 10-point plan is to bolster our incentive program. As Tom mentioned, I mean, this does not come free, at least in terms of, of being able to identify the right opportunities that make the right sense, business sense for the community, provide the return on investment that we're looking for. So we're going to spend some time reviewing our EDIP program and, and adding a component that relates to the bio target industry sector as a component part of that, and that we can address specifically in terms of providing the appropriate type of incentive that maximizes the return here to the community. We want to develop a royalty program. This is going to be, this is, this is out of the box thinking, but something that other communities have done, and we can do it very successfully. And that's an opportunity whereby if we find the right research, we may, as a community, want to, want to invest in terms of a, a grant or a royalty into that company. And as a result of that royalty payment to that company, when and if that company hits the big time, if you will, their science, their research is purchased by a major pharmaceutical or a major entity, we'll get a royalty payment back as a result of that investment. So we're going to use some technical experts. Obviously, we're not necessarily in the best position to make that evaluation, but Tom's firm, as well as members of the task force, will be, will set up a, a technical advisory committee that would do that assessment and make that recommendation for consideration. We're hoping to bring these back to you in more specific terms by the end of the year, hopefully sooner. The next two points speak to creating what we call a bio accelerator, an incubator, a wet lab. This is a, a chicken or egg situation. We've had situations here recently where there's been research that, that would like to come to Virginia Beach, but the research requires a hub or at least a place in which to, for that research to be conducted. And it's not necessarily enough to warrant a building to be built, per se, at least not at this phase, but it warrants the need for space. I'm happy to report today that we've had conversations with Ty Ward Community College, and they want to be a partner with us. And they're going to provide their, their building, the School of Health Professions, the second floor of that building, to us, for us to work in collaborative nature with them to go ahead and create this wet lab.
Think about this. This, if we can get it started here and show it can be successful, then we can go out to a developer and say, you need to build a building right in this Henley's district for this stuff to happen, you know? But, 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 but think about it.
This is a groundbreaking decision here.
You know, this is probably where some of that million dollars we had will be used to make sure we can set up the wet lab.
Yes, sir. And, and to add the third leg to that, LifeNet has partnered and said they will come on as the technical advisor to the, to the facility to make sure we vet the science and the research that's, that's going to be done within the building. And then, of course, with that, you know, we want to work with our, our task force to make sure there's the appropriate package of services as they become a member or part of that accelerator. What are the support programs or activities that need to go on in, in, in effort to support that activity? Four and five, again, we want to, to the mayor's point, at the appropriate time, begin to look at the biopark and, and putting in the appropriate infrastructure that's necessary to be the host, what we hope would be a destination for a clustering of industry and companies that are involved in this, this target industry sector. Obviously, we have a great opportunity with the amenities that are currently available within the Princess Anne Commons corridor, but we certainly want to create a hub and a designated location within the hub. And as we've mentioned, we have identified the, you know, 100, roughly 155 acres that will certainly accommodate well over a million square feet of space. I think will, will, will allow us to see, you know, growth for many years in the future. But, you know, that's, that's going to be an important component within the 10-point plan. High-speed broadband, critical. And again, council being very bold and aggressive, took the leadership of passing the resolution to create the regional broadband authority. I mean, high-speed data analytics, big data. I mean, we need this as in a component part of any support of any biomedical activity. And so the work that we've done to address bringing in high-speed broadband is going to be equally as important, if not the, one of the key amenities, and in many ways actually serve and could serve as an incentive for, for biomedical concern to, to locate in the, in the region. Six, we need to create a, a brand. And, you know, it's a brand that's not letterhead and envelopes. It's, it's a comprehensive, you know, brand of, of activities, whether it's a buzz within the social media networks or a buzz within major outlets. And we're going to be working, you know, specifically to create this kind of brand around the effort, so that it's clearly understood that this effort from Richmond to the oceanfront with Virginia Beach as the major component part of this gets, gets crafted and gets disseminated as a, as a component strategy of our plan. Seven, of course, is to recruit new bio companies from outside the market. I mean, that's, that's economic development 101. And certainly, we're going to work and continue to work with our existing bio firms, which is very important, and we don't want to not, not recognize that, but we certainly want to bring in, you know, new capacity and new companies into the marketplace. And we'll be spending a lot of, some effort, of course, in trying to mine those opportunities that, that are appropriate to Virginia Beach into our effort. We've already started the process. We had a very successful one. You hear, you will hear more about this as part of the, the market realities presentation portion of this, but we were at a major bio international show this past month. And, you know, I, I think you'll be impressed by the traction that we're making within the sector and, and why we think we are... the sector and, and why we think we are, are pretty much in a good position to see, you know, this as a major industry sector. Number eight, continue to work with the Commonwealth officials and of course, our industry stakeholders. You've heard Tom and the work that's been going on with, with the Commonwealth, with the state, you know, that there's an equal level of work that's being done, you know, with our local stakeholders as well, not only within the task force, but other entities outside the task force and making sure that they're well-connected into our effort and what we're doing and, and play, play a, you know, important role in, into some of our, our outcomes. Nine and 10, as I mentioned earlier, the existing of assisting existing companies. We certainly want to make sure that, that retention effort is there and that the opportunities, not only for that retention, but also they have spin-off opportunities that can, that can play a crucial role to our, our benefit. The word was earlier mentioned about LifeNet and their growth. They're, as it says, they're, they're hiring more than 100 employees. I think I heard specifically, it's like five new employees a week that are coming here, that are coming from outside the region, that have found LifeNet to be a great place for them to land in terms of their work, but also a great place to live for their, for their personal quality of life interests and their families. And then, of course, we have some regional partners that certainly make, make sense to, for us to continue to work with. You know, we have to make sure that we are creating the workforce, as Mr. Spore mentioned, to support this effort. And so, you know, we're going to be mining with all of the, the institutions that, that have a responsibility with workforce development and the entities that, that have an association with that to make sure we can also, you know, create the workforce to support some of the scientific research that we see coming our way. So with that, if, I'm going to ask maybe David to come on up and then share the, the market realities portion of the presentation.
David, we're glad you're here. Thank you very much. You've done well this too.
Thank you. Real quick, what I want to do is just kind of put some reality what Warren just went over. This plan that Warren just went over, we're already marketing it. Went to the Philadelphia Bio International Show mid-June. We started to report this out and we have a presentation we do. One of the first things we say in our presentation is, one, our city council is committed to this. This is our number one priority. And the excitement you see from these companies that we deal with, that we are, you know, the leading city in the state and as in terms of size, that we're working, we're a leader in our, in what we're doing in this industry sector and the influence that we're having with the state and what they're doing is remarkable. Some of the things we're hearing though, as in terms of the 10-point plan is, you see it a lot with the startup growth, even up to mid-sized companies, as in terms of what we're doing with, with either the incentive programs, the royalty programs, and also the access to venture capital, which we talked about as well. And also the players we've had in our task force and the influence and their commitment with the CEOs and presidents of the businesses that we're working with, the educational institutions. They're very excited about the opportunity to get started on the ground floor of a community that's developing an ecosystem to make bio the number one thing in the state. So they're very excited about that. We talked to companies that are in variety of industries, a variety of subsectors, either in delivery systems, research, manufacturing. We're talking to, I think, out of the companies, we met with only two are US, Belgium, Germany, Britain, Japan, Korea, they're, they're all over the map. So also too, some of the things that are also of interest to them is the highest, the broadband, high-speed, the, that's very interesting to them as well. So the stuff that we're talking about is already gaining traction. The wet lab accelerator for some of the small growth companies, it's very exciting to them to actually gain access to our market in a basic, small footprint to get a hold in here and that we will continue to support that effort as we move forward. That's, to see the traction is, is very exciting. We already have a visit from some of the companies, already from the show we just went to, you know, a month ago. So with that, I would say that this plan that we're pushing forward with the help of Tom and the task force members is, is already gaining some traction. So. And with that too, I just want to share with you, we have an invitation with you for the Virginia Bio reception on the 24th. So that's coming up. That is part of their board meeting. It's an opportunity to actually tour LifeNet and meet with some of their board members and actually leaders in the state in the bio sector.
Hey, thank you, David.
Yes, sir. So, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Council, that's the, the report, the update. What our goal would be to, on a quarterly basis, if you don't mind, to come back with you and give you some updates on where we are. This is a heavy investment we know that you've made in terms of a priority and we feel obligated, of course, to continue to make sure we maintain a, you know, a, a, a level of conversation with you in terms of where we're going. So if, we'd like to offer the opportunity to come back on a quarterly basis and bring you future updates.
Any questions or comments, please? Okay. We're behind you. Thank you so much.
Yeah, as I said earlier, the second opportunity we wanted to cover with you today is the Veterans Care Center.
Thanks for coming.
Yeah, see y'all later.
Thank you.
We've had a little discussion about this. It is a real serious opportunity and the state is really supporting this.
This won't take long. You all, we've briefed you on this before. This is also just a sort of a status of where we are. You're very much, I'm sure, aware of the opportunity that we have in terms of the desire led by Delegate Staley and, and Delegate Ron Villavea with regard to bringing a veterans' care facility here that will certainly focus on the healthcare of our Virginia veterans and some very critical areas. The profile of the, of the, of the project is up to 240 beds, certainly going to create some jobs and employees associated with that. There are some certain benefits in terms of construction related to the project. We'll, and I'll share with you, you know, we've talked about sites within the city and the sites in terms of requirements, range at a, at a maximum of 25 acres. It could actually fit on smaller acreage, up around 15 if they look at some two-story components to the project. Obviously, you know, we've all have committed to the Princess Anne Commons corridor as the, the ideal location. Using Mrs. Spore's hot tech right here. Again, Princess Anne Road, you know, Nemo to Westneck, we've zoomed in on the site there that we have available and that we've talked about. You can see, of course, its proximity to, you know, the bio park that we referenced in the previous presentation and some of the recreational components that's really national there. Wanted to give you a little bit of an update because we had a situation that during our vetting and due diligence, this was a site that you all have originally have, have seen, where we were looking at and talking about co-locating two opportunities here. And we've had recently, the mayor has had conversations with the school board chair and superintendent about, and Tony, about the site that they have. This represents, give or take, just over 44 plus or minus acres. Recently, Parks and Rec has conducted with work that they had done in the, in the recreational area, a wetland study done. And here's Leo to Nemo. That site is significantly wet. And so we're going to focus the veterans' care facility, still at the same location. It's just going to be on the, on primarily the school site, will support mainly the school site, and we're going to have to co-locate the other project somewhere else, which we'll brief you on here shortly.
Excuse me one second, Warren, and I apologize for interrupting you.
No, that's okay.
There are two things that come to mind. I want to break. First of all, Tony and the school superintendent and the chairman have been very open to us switching property. And Tony, I want you to go back and I want you to know thank you for what we're doing. But I hope you see why, I'm glad you're here for these presentations to see why we're doing it. But the second thing is, we think we've got all this land. And we just lost 25 acres to wetlands, round numbers. So we had close to 50 acres, we got 25 now. And we need to have a better read on what this land that we own is available, you know, as far as wetlands and so forth, because that was a shocker in that, if you all recall, I was going to say there were two to three acres shown. Jim, is that about right?
If you go back on that, there's what we
That's who we thought we were dealing with.
Those two little lobs and it turned out to be virtually the whole site.
So we got to, we need to evaluate what we own to see what we truly have out there as we're moving forward with these projects. Excuse me, Warren.
No, no, it's a good point and thank you for bringing all that together and certainly recognizing the cooperation from schools and, and the impact. I mean, and, you know, a lot of this right now, fortunately, is a part of some amenities to the, to the golf course. But you're right. I think, you know, we, we talk about 1,500 acres or 500 acres or whatever. It's certainly something that we should certainly get serious about and take a closer look at. I just want to give you the timeline. As you know, you know, we've gone through some steps here that have validated the site and, you know, we're at a point where the RFP is due. We're working on that application now. We're going to submit that on the 13th of this month, next week, and we'll, we'll put that in. And then as a part of the application, what's indicated in there are two things. One, you know, we convey, we convey the property to this use for a dollar, although we have done and have completed an appraisal of the property. So we have, you know, what the value of the property is and can share that with you. And then according to the application, there's a, about a nine-month review period that, that will go on associated with the application. So that being the case, we're thinking, estimating about a May, excuse me, a March of next year of a final decision being made in terms of the location. Questions?
Questions, Warren? Another good presentation.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you all.
John?
Warren, do, do we have any sense of how many other communities are participating in the RFP process?
We, we don't officially. We have heard Hampton and Prince William County. But again, it's one of those we don't know until the application, you know, is submitted. Now, we have heard a very strong commitment to what we've done and I think brag and somewhat being bold, we're further along again in terms of a site identified, you know, site worked done, conditions and that type of thing. But, you know, we do know and will probably be other sites submitted in this round. Now, there's supposed to be two and that the second one is supposed to be in Northern Virginia somewhere at some point.
I'll tell you, if it comes to fruition, it reminds me a little bit of Westbridge Bridge, where we, we're talking about, you know, what a pipe dream this is, but we better be, you know, at least talking about it and working towards it. And we're building that bridge and wouldn't it be nice to be building this too?
Mm-hmm. Yep.
Barbara?
On the, the issue of the school site, of course, this was not anything that was real imminent that there was going to be a school built on that site, but we had reserved it for future and so forth. We certainly have, I think, acquired a lot of property in the area that can, can be very adaptable to the school site. So we want everybody on that side of the
And certainly, we want to work with schools to, yeah, that's right.
Compliment, that we're, we're committed that, that, that property will be available and
That's a great point.
We're certainly not shirking that responsibility.
Not at all. No, no, we will find a, working with schools, an appropriate site that will accommodate their future plans for, for schools in that district.
But more than anything, I'm so glad Tony heard the introduction of this meeting. You know, if we want to continue to have the best schools, we got to make these investments and we're all going to have to work together.
Sure.
You know, to get these jobs that we want.
Right.
And, you know, I'm just so glad that guy from Punggol can take all that in.
We got a health sciences academy over there at Bayside High School, don't forget.
That's right.
That's right. That's right. Barbara?
But I, but I think, you know, when we think about this entire area, it just, it's just so amazing, you know, when I guess the, the whole area was sort of declared by the Navy to be off limits for residential. Everybody thought it was the end of the world. You know, as things have come about, and particularly when we did the, you know, when we did the ITA study because we were saying to the property owners, okay, your property is going to be used for something, we will have plans for it. But even when we did that study, we had absolutely no idea, you know, that all of this would come along. But again, it's sort of getting things, getting our ducks in a row to be ready. And, and with the ability to acquire this property with the, the BRAC program and with the Navy's participation, it's just all come together in such a fashion that, you know, if we had, if we had even known what we were doing, we couldn't have done this well. I mean, it's just phenomenal.
I, I, there's been a lot of luck here.
You daggone right, that is. I think the fact that we're positioned as we are
We could look brilliant, but we'll just say it's luck.
Right. It is. I mean, it's been one step at a time and we thought we were doing one thing and we wind up doing another.
Sure.
But you know, I think that, you know, when you pull out that ITA plan and you look at the potential that we have, and now, of course, we've acquired those properties, not only Brown Farm, which we didn't think at the time we did the study, that was going to be owned by the city, but now we've acquired still others that are just, just really phenomenal acquisitions with the Navy's participation.
Correct.
Yeah, it's luck.
Thank you. But it's really, it's really, I get to your point, it's positioned the community well to really take advantage of it and strategically, as, as again, from your economic development standpoint, bring in some quality assets for commercial development, job creation and creating some, some wealth in the community.
One more thing that, that is a caveat, you know, from me, which doesn't mean a daggone thing, but I certainly don't want us to fritter any of this away. I mean, we've got to really hold out for the best for what is really, really intended. I mean, not that we think we've got all this land and whatever comes along, we can put it there. It's got to be reserved for
Be targeted, be very, that's what Tom said. Let's be very laser-focused and very targeted on its use. Yep. Good point.
Very good. Warren, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. We're going to go now move to city council liaison reports. Everyone speak up. Okay, I want to make sure I let everyone speak, you know?
Nobody's been going any means lately.
Make it fast, make it fast.
How about the city council comments?
Well, I have some.
Okay, Rosemarie, then Amelia.
I just wanted to say the, that food truck park that we voted on.
Yeah.
I've walked through there and been over there. It is really, really nice. They did a great job and it's a fun place to go. Johnny, have you been in there at night? And there's people, they've got a little band and people are playing cornhole. They've got these picnic tables that have been all hand painted. They're beautiful and, I mean, it's, and they've got little lights strung everywhere. It's, it's an
I'm ridden by them going in it.
It's really nice what they did and I'm, I'm really glad that we voted on it and approved it.
Right. Amelia?
A couple of things. First of all, we had a wonderful time July 4th at the Senior Resource Center with all of the group. How many did we have, Barbara?
Around 100.
About 100 and the young man who works with me, I play the piano and he had his harmonicas out and we sang some patriotic songs and we had a great time. Also, I attended the school board meeting last week and actually spoke at their public hearing and as an advocate for the Ham, uh, Kemsville Academy. They have seven and we're proposing an eighth, which should be a business entrepreneurship. And they said, we haven't had a council person come and speak to us, but it looked like it was, it's very favorable as well as I heard there about the, the stomp, the pump station. So they approve of that seal. That's a win-win for them because they get some money off of that. There was a ribbon cutting over as one of the swam businesses and I participated in that for, they call themselves the Business Express in Kemsville. And our little eaglets are gaining ground. The ladies, the little girl ones, there are two, and they're going out to help for fishing, but they have to bring the food back. So the boy eagle, I don't know what's going on with them, but isn't that interesting how things happen even in the animal world? And otherwise than that, I know maybe you're going to address to do with the wonderful sister cities. So I'll leave that to you.
Okay. Next, Barbara?
Looking at the, the update of the comprehensive plan and, and, you know, we've heard just even in the, in the prior presentations, just how important our comprehensive plan is. And looking at, at the schedule, I was wondering if we could have a, a report of their update to us before our retreat, because I think it's really important that we make sure we're all on the same way. the same wavelength. I noticed that, you know, we had been, the schedule had been that we would have approved this about November, but I see it slipped until March. And, you know, if they have, well, I would really like to know what direction they think we should go in, if they have identified some areas that perhaps there need to be some changes or, you know, but we just need to kind of know that we're all headed in the right direction or in the same direction.
Jim, can you think you can get that in before?
We're doing it on August 4th.
Okay, that would be good. Thank you.
Shannon?
Two things. As Barbara was talking about something else for the agenda, I know Jim had asked some time ago if we could get a presentation that's kind of the pros and the cons to offshore drilling. Where are we on getting them on the agenda?
Our sort of expert on that, Bob Mathias, is laid up with back surgery right now. But as soon as he gets back, we can schedule that.
And then I wanted to give a kudos to the Parks and Rec staff. They worked so hard this weekend for the Fourth of July celebration of Mount Trashmore. Everything went so smoothly. They started the fireworks 15 minutes early because they knew the storm was coming. And I swear, I think they must have had a direct connection because as soon as the last firework went off, the rain started. So it was perfect timing, and it was a great event. And my son ran up and down that hill so many times that he slept for two days when we got home.
You could hardly wait to do that again.
Well, we also need to say that a lot of folks did a lot of good things to put together the sister city signing yesterday. It was the first time I had actually been over to the gazebo that we've heard so much about.
Yeah.
But it's really beautiful over there, and I think it was the perfect spot for that ceremony. And it looks like Kemsville is coming together very well.
It really does.
Really. Complimental. Everybody's worked on all of that.
Other, I've got three things. The first one, it was a heck of a weekend. When I was with the group from Alonka Po yesterday, every time today they were supposed to be here, it was supposed to be raining, and it didn't, except in the evening. And I had the opportunity to go down for the Fourth of July fireworks on 20th Street and do a proclamation for David Conkle. Anyway, to make a long story short, I've never seen so many people, and I've been down there a minute a year.
It was unbelievable.
And it was just spectacular. And everybody I've talked to business-wise is extremely pleased. And so a great Fourth of July. And it appears that it was a wonderful crowd. I know the crowd that I saw down there was having fun and just, you know, hot graduate more anywhere, anytime. Sister Cities, I got to, we've got to compliment Ruth and everyone that helped her. Ruth, you got to be exhausted. It was an amazing feat. You know, the Alonka Po crowd was here, and they were entertained the whole time they were here. And they enjoyed themselves quite a bit. And again, we did have the signing of the sister cities charter, I guess you'd say, Ruth.
Yes, sir. And also, the first time ever, all council members were present.
Yeah, we, yeah, the whole Alonka Po City Council came, which was, and just wonderful, wonderful people. The next thing, as you know, I've missed a couple of meetings, and I just want you all to know I was away playing. Not really. I'm not a traveler, never have been. But, you know, Warren has made it clear to me it's important for me to travel with economic development every now and then. And I will tell you, they put together a schedule that is productive. And that's the reason you want us to be there. You want us to be productive. And we started eight. And please understand, in Germany, in France, in Spain, it doesn't get dark till 10 o'clock. So we don't even have dinner till 10 or 11 o'clock. And we start earlier than eight quite a bit. But my point being that this was really well organized. The meetings we had were very productive. And I hope that we'll be able to announce something from the results of one of those meetings. A matter of fact, I think it would have been a done deal if the euro hadn't fluctuated so much in recent months. But I want to applaud Warren and his entire team because, you know, anyone that thinks this is fun, don't get me wrong, you make anything, you do fun. But my point, you work your tail off. And I don't know about you all, I can't sleep on an airplane, you know? And you get right off that airplane, and you got to go meet with people. It is hard work. And for people to make a career out of that, more power to you. I'm glad I didn't. But we got a professional group over there in economic development. And what's really nice about Warren is also bringing in a younger crowd. I'm sure you all have seen it, you know, the liaisons, some really, really smart people, which Warren really needed. And Warren, I am going to put you on the spot, but Warren has been very active and still working with the Economic Development Alliance. And progress is being made, but not to the point where we cross the finish line. Would you like to...
Yeah, just very quickly, Mayor. As you all know, you all charged me and Doug and the manager to make sure, as we look at the Hampton Roads Economic Development Alliance, that during this process of a reset, as we call it, that we make sure that whatever we make, and when, and if we make a recommendation to you, it's at the level of your expectation of a group of this sort receiving this type of funding. You may be getting a call. I think they want to get on the road and meet with some council members. I mean, that's your call as to what you share with them. But certainly, it's not at a point where it's ready. And certainly, if and when it's ready, we'll be certainly first to share that with you and advise you as to, you know, what appropriate steps you should take at that point. So.
Thank you, my friend.
Yeah.
All right. Any other council comments?
No, I just have supplemental disclosures for Cavalier Ventures before you get started.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. All right. Let's go to the council agenda, please.
Okay. Under ordinances, are there any items there? Anybody have any concerns or questions about the...
No concerns, but I'm going to be abstaining on the first item, even though I don't have a conflict that would keep me from voting. I do have an interest in some property nearby. I'm just, I'm going to have a...
On, so everybody okay on the rest of the ordinances? All right. On the planning, anybody have any problems with Cavalier Ventures, Cavalier Associates LLC?
That I'll be abstaining on that one, please.
I'll be abstaining, too, Mr. Vice Mayor.
Okay.
Mr. Vice Mayor, I'll be abstaining also. And could I take you back to item number five under ordinances, please? Donations to the Urban League, that I will be abstaining on that part of it.
Item five under ordinances?
Yeah.
All right. WHLR, Laskin Road LLC, Lynn Haven, Mr. Wood?
That's actually a neat project that's going to actually expand further east. So it's going to be pretty neat.
I'm sorry, say that again.
Yeah, I'm okay with it, but it's got some potential for, it's more expansion and economic development work.
Okay. Shore Drive Farm Market LLC, Mr. Wood?
Everybody seems very excited about that one.
Yeah. If I voted against it, my wife would kill me.
Add it to the list.
Tough crowd, tough crowd.
CP Marine Diesel Services. It looks like they've worked out the issues there on that, thanks to the planning department's initiative to get that done. And Paul S. Brown Family LLC, I understand that they, the applicant has asked for a deferral to August the 4th.
Yeah, definitely.
That's something that would be...
Fifty letters.
There are two letters. Okay, so in depth at the 12.
Yeah, whatever they ask for. I think they have a, just being able to have the people here, but they will make sure the community is notified well in advance.
Yeah. BT Holdings LLC, Princess Anne.
That's the same application essentially.
Pardon?
That's the same application essentially, so.
Okay, okay. So all of it's deferred. Okay. City of Virginia Beach to amend Section 1700 City's Own Orders, Reference Shore Drive Corridor Plan and Design Guidelines. And also be the defining farm distillery. Anybody have any problems?
No, but I do have a question. You know, it says, and this is my own lack of being knowledgeable of such things, but it says, okay, this is for beverages other than beer and wine. And all of the agricultural products for this product has to be raised on the farm. Just not right now, but at some point. Please tell me what that is. All I can think of is corn liquor. But it can't be that.
You got a problem with that?
Well, I just want to know what it is.
We do have to expand business.
This is economic development.
Used to be called Moonshine.
Moonshine has been around in Princess Anne County from the very beginning, except recent years. And I just want to know what we're going to be...
She might want to get it. She just wants to know more. She might want to know where to buy it.
I want to know what we need to produce.
And we farms.
Opening up new opportunities.
It's in strawberries.
Strawberry liquor. I got it.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor.
The Chair will entertain a motion to recess into closed session pursuant to the exemptions from open meetings allowed by Section 2.2-3711A Code of Virginia as amended for the following public purpose. Public contract discussion. We order public contract involving the expenditure of public funds and discussion of terms or scope of such contract, which discussion in an open session would adversely affect the bargaining position or the negotiating strategy of the public body pursuant to Section 2.2-3711A 29 City View, Leeward Station, Old Beach Village 2. Publicly held property discussion or consideration of acquisition of real property for public purpose or the disposition of publicly held property where discussion in an open meeting would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of the public body pursuant to Section 2.2-3711A 3 Bayside Beach, Lynn Haven and Princess Anne District Development Project. Personnel matters. Discussion, consideration of or interviews of prospective candidates for employment, assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salaries, disciplining, or resignation of specific public officers, appointees, or employees pursuant to Section 2.2-3711A 1. Council appointments, councils, boards, commissions, committees, authorities, agencies, and appointees. Have a motion.
Someone?
Second.
Got a motion in a second. We call the roll, please.
Mr. Dan Ward?
Mr. Dyer?
Aye.
Mr. Henley?
Aye.
Mrs. Kane?
Aye.
Dr. Rob Hammond?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Wood?
Aye.
Mr. Whitehead?
Aye.
All right. Okay, folks, we're going to take a recess till 4:30.